Hey, we're live. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Start if you'd like.
All right, so thank you for uh taking the time to meet with us today on this project. Um to give you a little background on the project. Uh it was um conversation about the project started around two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And um it was discussed to do some upgrades to Little Dry Creek Park. Which is only sixty-four between Federal and Pecos. And at the Clear Creek, um I come, well, where Little Dry Creek um kind of um flows into the Clear Creek. And so there, as as mentioned previously, there is a drop structure for the NSF. With creek um changes in elevation, but it's, I believe it's a nine-foot drop structure. Um that it that we wouldn't do today. So as those are built today, typically they're spread out over a longer distance on a creek or river. And they're smaller drops and they're managed drops, one to let fish safely navigate. Um and also for uh for humans. Um this shop is dangerous and a safety hazard. It's been in place for between fifty and and seventy years. I believe it was built in the fifties. It's um it's got some structural issues with it. It's a liability. It is purely BNSF's liability currently. And the idea for the project was to spread that drop. It was the emphasis, I'm sorry, for the project was Mile High Flood District. Identified this as a safety concern. And we were going to partner with Mile High Flood District. Um along with BNSF to uh do a project where we spread that drop structure out. And when you spread that out, you can get some recreational amenities. So essentially, it creates like a white whitewater features in the in the creek. So you'd have an opportunity for surfing and or tubing, um kayaking, rafting down these spread out uh drops now and a kind of a whitewater experience for the community to be able to access Clear Creek. So that was the the original uh project. Um so Parks and Public Works were working with Mile High Flood District together. And um Public Works had committed funding initially. And then Parks came in later to um to try to create some recreational amenities. I've got some more information on the funding coming up, but um. Now the arrows are not working. Okay, so thank you. I got it now. So here is the location. You can see here is Pecos and Federal. And kind of right in between on Clear Creek is this Little Dry Creek. So a couple of issues where this drop structure, which is right under the BNSF line. And then also there were some issues with um the Martin Marietta property that's right here. Because as you kind of floated down the river, you were gonna come out right around where that drop structure was, right around where that bridge was. And potentially out onto the Martin Marietta property, which would have created some additional issues. And so some negotiations had to be done with Martin Marietta. And so the IGA with the Flood District was was first executed in twenty eighteen with updates in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one for the the kind of the park project. The improvements to Little Dry Creek Lake, where we have a trailhead and there's fishing available now. And also to the creek. And we presented the project in July of twenty-two. And we were um directed to pursue additional funding in at that time because the the that was the main issue. Um and asking BNSF to contribute more to the project, which they um did not agree to. And then we presented in June of twenty twenty-three. And at that time, the big issue was the contract negotiations. Where we were directed to go back one more time and try to make um uh the agreement work and get through the liability issues. Um Doug had spent a year doing that or two years doing that. We had met with their staff on several occasions trying to uh find a way uh past the impasse. And we were unable to do that. We did, however. Um Public Works, uh Renee and and Brian's team were able to uh come to an agreement with Martin Marietta. So that piece of it was 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 a part that was uh resolved. The other thing that we presented in twenty twenty-three was that the project had a shortfall. So at the time, the project costs were estimated at about twenty-one million dollars. And we had about, at that time, about eighteen million. Um since then, the Flood District had looked at contributing some more funding to bring that total up. And then we had talked at the time about if we added a a little more funding, we could also support it. And so we kind of came up with a plan, but it was all contingent on on getting the agreement with BNSF side. So um the funding was kind of secondary to getting the agreement taken care of. And so this is what the proposed project funding looked like. Um and the twenty twenty uh five numbers um are were just proposals. They were not committed. Um but that's that was how we were working to try to make ends meet. The previous funding from eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two was funding that, uh even twenty-three was funding that had been either set aside or um in our case, transferred over to Mile High Flood District for them to manage the project. The the agreement we had with the Flood District is we were transferring them the money that we're gonna manage construction. We were very, in twenty-three, we were at ninety-five percent um design documents ready to go. We we could have started um construction in twenty-three or twenty-four if we could have gotten the agreement in place, but since we were unable to get the agreement, construction did not start. So that nineteen point seven is what we could have had um and what we were planning to have. Um kind of in the twenty twenty-four timeframe. Um and then we still would have been uh based on our twenty twenty-three estimate of about twenty mil- one million dollars, about two million dollars short to try to get the project done and constructed. On the page, you can see in twenty twenty-five, there's two point three million in uh PLD fees. These are the development defeat fees, and I had discussed very similar ish, the the same money with you. It's roughly the same amount that was available then um to be used for this project. And um you know, looking at the fact that this project is likely not going to move forward, we've also looked at those for the the Bluffs project, and that's what I discussed with you when we did our CIP presentation a few weeks ago.
Can you explain the PLD for me again? What does PLD stand for?
It's development related. So as a development is built in unincorporated Adams County, fees are collected and they um they can either they have an option of either to build a park and dedicate it to us to build a park and maintain it. Or to to provide us with cash in lieu of
Cash building a park.
And those fees can are kind of kept by community and economic development um uh in a cost center as they build up, and then they are available to be applied for for a project.
Okay, and then so we only use these for kind of amenity type projects?
Yeah, it's for parks or schools is what they're
Parks are
For.
Yeah, separate. Yeah, there's different fees that are collected for um school districts. And so those are then sent to school districts for their capital projects so that they can use them for school projects. And then there's a separate account that's for um regional parks and then local parks. And so those are all tracked and um the our Parks Department can use some of those funds in accordance with the rules laid out in the regulations.
Okay, so the two point three million that we have here, though, that does not include the school portion.
Correct.
The schools get their own side. Okay, alright, so it's just okay. Alright, that's helpful. Thank you.
So the next kind of graph here shows here's how much we actually did contribute to Mile High Flood District. So again, the expectation was we were done with design. We were gonna start constructing. So we transferred money over to the Flood District for them to manage the project.
I'm sorry, going back to that previous slide, you said, so did BNSF, did they actually contribute any money?
They did not. They're they they
So that money does not exist.
Correct. If we could have had the agreement, that's how much they were gonna contribute. That's how much they had agreed to contribute.
Okay, yeah.
And we had tried to get them to increase that amount. That's the amount we had been talking about since about twenty eighteen. And they would not increase that amount, even though costs were escalating.
And even though our estimate was that for them to replace that structure, just for with the exact same structure would have been more.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just a quick question on that. Are there like that structure, does it need to be replaced?
It does.
It's over fifty years old.
Who's telling them that it needs to be replaced?
Flood District has had that conversation with them.
So at the very least, shouldn't they be shouldn't they be replacing that?
They should be replacing it.
I mean, and can't the Flood District, like, I mean, this is a public safety issue, I'm assuming.
Right.
So they don't really, I why why are, you know, I mean, I get it.
That's the Flood District's concern.
Yeah.
With this project going away, number one concern is the safety issue that's kind of left hanging out there. Cause it is unsafe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, it's the NSF's responsibility.
Agreed, yeah. Oh, it is. No, it is. It's their, it's their, it's their structure. It's their responsibility.
So the Flood District and the rail line are gonna have to duke that out eventually because it needs to get replaced anyway. Alright, and we were just coming in with a different proposal of this is something else we could do.
Yeah, take advantage of them having to spend the money.
The structure's at end of life, so it needs to be replaced. We want to replace it with something better for the community as opposed to just doing a replacement of this drop.
Right, that's helpful.
Only better, but safer, and then you get the recreation benefits.
I mean, yeah, better for the better for the community, yeah.
Okay, that that helps with the background of why we're doing this.
And we won't be able to reinstall similar structure.
Right.
I would imagine the technology require
They believe to design something likely somewhat similar on their own now.
Yeah, they can do it without the recreation pieces to it, but they likely are not going to replace it exactly as it is.
Thank you.
And Brian Staley is with us today. Brian, if I get any of that wrong, please feel free to chime in. Okay, alright. And um so this is the money we've actually transferred over to Mile High Flood District than they have in the bank. Um the Adams County Open Space Grants, we transferred them the money kind of in advance with the idea that once construction uh was completed, that we would be paid back that amount to the Open Space Projects Fund. So that four point five million came out of the Open Space Project Fund balance went to the Flood District and has been sitting in the Flood District. Again, with the assumption we were gonna start the project and and we didn't. We don't do business that way anymore. Um we would wait until the project was done and then pay back now. Um but staff at the time, that that was the approach they took. And it was two different grants, um but four five, four point five million was the total. We also paid three point two million out of Open Space Project Fund in addition to the grant funding to to get the project moving again with the assumption that construction was ready to go and we needed the funding to get construction underway. And Public Works had transferred the Flood District seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in twenty eighteen for for the project. So this, if if we're not moving forward with the project, this is money that's sitting over at the Flood District that we need to kind of deal with. And and that was kind of the the heart of what I wanted to talk about today was what's your direction on on what we do with that money? Any questions about that trend, those transactions?
Good question. So for the second item, it says Adams Parks, three point two million paid for from Open Space Projects Fund. Keep with the flood district and transfer to the SPR Whitewater Project?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
I'll talk about that in just a second. Yeah, these are just a couple of recommendations for you, but it's it's really what you wanna do. But we are planning um a similar project and have been for several years on the South Plate River. It's come to you multiple times, and I'm actually bringing an update to you with the Flood District on um October twenty-ninth. It's going to give you all the detail on that project and get you up to speed as to some things we've run into with it and also um give you an update as to where design is. And there was an acquisition phase to it, so we'll update you on that. But the idea is that project came out of the South Plate Coalition that we have with Brighton, Thornton, and Commerce City. And it was to be the first constructed project out of the several projects that were named um along the South Plate River in Adams County. And so it it's it too is fixing some um drop structures that are um uh live their their life and are are need to be, they have issues and need to be uh fixed and corrected. And so the idea was to look at doing something similar um up at Riverdale Regional Park, so.
Is the railroad involved in those?
No, no railroad on that one.
And you know, another place I've identified for similar project is at between Pelican Ponds and the South Plate Trail Trail Park in Thornton at eighty-eight Colorado. In that area that we've talked, that's what I brought up. We haven't, we haven't started those meetings yet, but I I would like to see something uh similar.
Yep, yep.
I will say for the short time I've been involved in the last twenty-five years, like in like just neighborhood stuff and like planning commission and things like that, it is consistently and repeatedly been a request for us to activate our water areas for not, you know, they've been dirty, they've been you know, beat down, they've been polluted on like
From our industrial background.
It is. And 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 we literally have like what I think could be a better confluence and network of trails, you know, along the waterways than anyone because we literally have Clear Creek, Flat, Sand Creek, like we have those assets, not including NiV, like it's amazing. And it's just, so I I wanted like, cause I know like the question will be like, oh my God, we keep adding more of these projects, adding more of these projects. This has always been the vision. I think like the question then is, like when we run into a situation like with BNSF and others, like we just sometimes hit a roadblock, or we run into a situation where like oh, we didn't think it was gonna cost this much. What I appreciate is that you guys are saying, hey, while the hood is up and some of these things need to be done, if we add a little bit more, we can turn this into an amenity without having to either number one, let them do it and then regret that we didn't do it. Or do it ourselves, and then we didn't have that leverage of of the capital stack of these things. But I think like, I am anticipating like, like I know Lynn's gonna ask him, it's right, thing is like wh- wh- where is this on the project plan? Where are these, you know, like, how are we gonna prioritize? Like, let's make sure if it's on the radar, then it's actually on the radar we're talking about. And and that we can, because what may have been like a while the hood is up for five hundred thousand dollars five, ten years ago might be now it's a five million, ten million dollar uh a tag, and that's kind of what happened with the arena. We kind of got to the end. It's kind of like what's happening with jail, like, you know, like the longer we wait, some of these things happen. But anyway, I appreciate when when Kathy said that, yes, like we have strategically identified for decades that we have this underutilized like infrastructure and asset in the water that we have. So, thank you. Keep going.
So Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Go right ahead. I'm sorry.
Love you, Steve. But it seems like the one that has the longest memory remembers what the vision is. So looking around the table, none of us were here.
Yeah.
In the last twenty-five.
Looking at the plan too.
Oh, okay.
I could show
Um, so my question is, is help me out. So right now, Mile High Flood has eight point four or five million dollars. They have that funding. Okay, so the Adams County Open Space Grant of four point five million, is that portion any part of the six point five million in outstanding dollars now for the five or six projects um that you came to us about two or three months ago, you and Rayanne?
No, um that it 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 wa- it is one of the projects, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question at first. Yes, it is a project that has been deferred. And um it is one that is beyond the five years. And um it is part of that funding that, you know, we we would like to be able to close the grant out and and move on. And then that, so it is being held out of fund balance. And if you make the decision to uh to to close this project out, that money would go back into the fund balance for open space grants. And just so you know, in this current cycle, we're about one point eight million dollars short of all of the projects that have been requested for open space grants. So it could, it would certainly solve that problem and also provide more fund balance for future projects. But it is being held out.
In if in unincorporated acts, so not for the, we're not doing with that.
Total competitive grants.
Right.
Not just our project.
Okay, so we'd be putting that money, if we put that, if we're short and this money goes back in, then not all of it gets directed to Adams County Open Space Projects. It's two, it would go, it could be
Goes in the share pot.
It's competitive.
It goes in the share pot.
There's two pieces to it. There there's two pieces to it. One is, there's a four point five million dollar placeholder with the Open Space um Grant Fund that we cannot dole out to other communities or or anybody that applies because it's being held as if this project is gonna happen. The other piece of it is, we've already paid out of our own money, four point five million over to the Flood District. So that's sitting with them. That will actually come back to us to be able to be used in unincorporated. So it it frees up money in two places if we um move past this project, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Quick question. Why are we over on the the grants? Did you say one point two million?
Roughly, roughly. More, we've had more requests than we have money available.
Okay, but we didn't grant people money that we don't have.
No, no.
That's what I was
It's gonna Yeah, the board actually meets um um tonight, and in that meeting, they'll talk about what strategies to take or what to do with the fact that the there's more grant requests than there is money.
Okay, so one of the things that I think Lynn, you wanted to bring back is when it comes to that grant, talking about the criteria use some of those funding those projects, right? Remember, we had questions about the last grantees and we're like, does that really meet the spirit of?
It was the
Is that something else?
Maintenance. So different subject, the open space competitive grant funding is that that funding can now go towards maintenance projects, like irrigation systems and a drone and fencing. So does it really meet the spirit of open space, which is the that's the name of the tax.
And that's different than what we're talking about here.
It would be the same thought.
The same thought.
But do that's a different, the criteria is a different conversation than what's being discussed here.
Yes, okay, but just wanted to clarify that that is something that we wanted to come back and talk about before we start issuing the next round of grants, if
Which sounds like it's happening right now.
Sounds like it's happening now.
Sounds like where where are we at in the process?
Where the, so all of the grants have been, I I think we had mentioned last time to you that 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 process had already started. That they had already, the applications had already been out. Um the process was already opened. So I think it was gonna be coming back to you before the first um grant process next year.
Next year, so twenty-six.
Right.
Cycles, okay.
Uh first grant cycle would open in that February uh timeframe.
Okay.
So we'll come back to you in February um and have that conversation prior to that process opening up.
Okay. So we have a plan.
So with that said, um four point, um the four point five million dollars uh seems to make the most sense that that gets paid back to the Open Space Projects Fund and we close that grant out, which would free up that four point five million for open space grants. Um the seven hundred and fifty to go back to the Road and Bridge Fund um within Public Works. And then the three point two million is the question. Do we want to return that to Open Space Projects Funds over in here or keep it with the Flood District and potentially move it to the um the South Plate River Project? And and you don't have to make that decision today. Um since we're gonna do a presentation on the twenty-ninth, it might make sense to hear that and and kind of think through that. I can tell you on that project, we have been working on that project for several years. And um we're also working on a grant with GOCO for that project. We've been building the relationship with GOCO for several years for that. Um and that's a partnership with the Flood District as well. And again, um this slide is just saying I'll I'll be back on the twenty-ninth with that. And then these are just some things, if we, once, if we get that four point five million back to the Open Space Fund, these were just some things that could be done with it. It's really whatever you want to do with it. Um but I know these are some of the things we've talked about. We had the one point seven million in the Bluffs Project that we were gonna ask for from the General Fund in twenty-eight, I believe. Um you know, it it could cover that, so we would not need funding from the General Fund for that project. Um we could do the land acquisition in Strasburg. We have, we have other funding we could do that for as well. Um we also could, if we purchased the land in Strasburg, we could develop the the park there. We could look at additional property in Strasburg and look at, you know, potentially starting uh or at least doing acquisitions to start thinking about a trail system there. Um we could do planned improvements to Lane Volante or Pelican Ponds. Uh we could develop playground, which has lived its useful life at Riverdale Regional Park that we kind of have some planning money in the plan for, but we don't have funded in the five-year plan. And then or certainly it could go toward that uh South Plate River Project if you wanted it to go there. So, you know, and we don't necessarily need specific direction from you today on this. Just kind of showing if it goes back, we have options of different things that we can do.
Steve.
I do have, um so I don't want the money to burn a hole in a pocket if it's now back out. But as I guess the question would be, uh you have some really good things here. I've heard, and I'm gonna just say it, I'm not trying to take the wind out of the sails of what my colleague would probably say, but I'm gonna say it. We've in the last three or four weeks talked about land acquisitions in the eastern plains. And how we are looking for to take advantage of early money, early pricing cause it's not gonna get easier. And if there are strategic acquisitions that we can make, particularly the one that we discussed the other day, I don't remember if it's the Strasburg Bennett Watkins one, I think it was the Strasburg when we're between a park. Yeah, like this is exactly the type of opportunity we need to take advantage of when we can. It's a long term, the longer we wait, as we're learning, these projects age like fine milk and they just get more expensive over time. And so I guess I would say, uh if you were to ask me, uh and it was what, like eight hundred thousand dollars? What was it?
Seven hundred and thirty.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'd say we put that at the top of this list. Second thing I would ask is, there are other other areas where you're asking for
Cause this is out of the Open Space Fund.
Are there other areas that you've asked recently for general fund dollars?
That Bluffs Project.
The Bluffs Project, but that's in two years from now.
Right.
Three years from now. But like, are there others like this year and next year where you've been asking us to dig a little deeper into the other pocket, meaning general fund? What are those?
The the barn at Riverdale Regional Park, the fourth barn. So it was originally gonna be seven million dollars, but we have, we've worked it down to where it's gonna be roughly two million.
So for me, that would free up two million in the general fund, potentially, so that
And that, that that was not recommended, but we also think we can find efficiency in the COP's project to be able to pull that that off. Because we're not using all the contingency and we have, we've we've gained some efficiency with that project that we feel like we can do it. So I I don't know that that has to go toward that project.
Then that's a discussion to have is, is it better to throw that into the debt mix or pay the debt off faster and not have to spend that two million over time, which would become three or four?
Sure.
You know, you get it done now. I'm gonna defer to my colleagues. I'm gonna defer to my colleagues, I would love to hear from particularly Lynn, if you would, if 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 this is the kind of thing, like when we could get the land acquisitions team, I'm just gonna say, I've been bullish on this, I'm gonna you you always have more options when you own the property. And so, what are your thoughts?
I I agree, like understanding where the money can be used in future projects is um an important conversation. It sounds like we're gonna have that conversation on the twenty ninth, is that correct? As you dive into some other projects that
The twenty ninth is when we're gonna discuss the South Plate River Project specifically. So we weren't gonna get into a discussion about several projects at once.
Okay, so one of the things
I thought we were talking about the fair on the twenty ninth and the
That's also gonna be
Okay, so one of the things I'm kind of struggling with is these are just kind of like, I feel like these suggestions are just kind of off the cuff, like pooh 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 pooh, this is what we could do with the money, yay, and like not really being thoughtful about like our plans.
This is just an off the cuff, this is not saying, here's a recommendation and you, no. This is just saying, if we get that money back, which we do not have now, these are the types of things you could do, but it's really what your priorities are.
Okay, so I think it, having a full scope conversation is gonna be really helpful when we talk about where we could potentially put this money, cause all of these sound like great ideas, but to be honest, like again, I'm I'm just like, I don't even know the history of some of these projects, I don't know. You know, is there a ranking here that has been established before?
And and we we'd ha- be happy to do that, but we really want your feedback. Wanna know what your priorities are, and you know, when we did the last presentation, we heard we heard loud and clear about Strasburg, I think our big challenge was how do we maintain it, but we've been working with Alicia and Dion on a plan to potentially be able to at least get started on doing that.
Okay, alright, no, I think that that's fantastic, and if we do have these money, these dollars returned, having a thoughtful conversation about where they go is gonna be really important. The only thing I just wanted to highlight is, cause it seems like this project is coming to a close, like there's not steps moving forward with trying to complete this. I did wanna just confirm, when we, when you guys engaged with the rail line in the past, was it just kind of at a staff level? Did we have any type of federal lobbyists kind of come in? Because right there overseen by the federal things and that's why they don't like to listen to anybody else, um which is fine, um but like, I'm just trying to confirm that all engagement, all kind of um uh any way that we tried to work with the NSF has been exhausted before we close out the idea that this project is literally dead. Like, are we, do we feel like we did everything we could have?
We have not engaged with anybody federal to get involved. Um we did everything we could at staff and also with legal to uh to try to get the agreement to move forward. It was, we did everything we could, however, we have not engaged with anybody federal to to get involved in any way.
Okay, alright, I'm I'm just trying to confirm that this project is dead and that we are, it sounds like it is, but
And it's also, there's also still a funding shortfall for it as well.
Okay, so we're just gonna let it go and take the money back and decide what next steps are, okay, that was my question.
Okay, so I'm along the same lines as Julie that I thought this project, BNSF, was dead for a while, um we just cannot take on the risk of indemnifying the railroad. Um there's a funding shortfall, that's a side segue to what really is the challenges. And I understand why, I mean, making improvements on their land and property, um I think as a a property owner myself, like if you're gonna make improvements on my land and property, like then you all also own all of the risk and all the challenges and I think it was um a stretch to try to really make that recreational, knowing the indemnification language that we know now. Um separate conversation is now what do we do with the funding? So, I'm an operational person at heart, um have solved the problem and so I'm confused on the open space grant funding a little bit, um so we don't have control of that funding, it's not Mile High Flood, we can ask for it back. I'm just really conflicted and I appreciate you being, bringing it up, Steve, of like the vision always was recreation on water and that's Brighton, residents want recreation on water, we have
It's an economic development potential too. The whole center valley, um central.
For me, and I don't know where the board is, is that I feel like I need a pause on and getting my arms around what is going on in parks. So I don't feel like I have a good um handle on today's, you know, the funding is at Mile High Flood for this project, there's challenge. You know, I I'm the CIP came different than the budget presentation, you're gonna do a thing on October twenty ninth and then there was a thing on Strasburg and then we're here today talking about this and I don't know, I feel like we need to level set as a board of what really are the priorities, what are the operational needs that you see? So we have operational needs that you see, we also have constituent asks that you're likely hearing more so than us. The board has its own vision of what we would like to see out in community, what we're also hearing, and I just don't know if all of those are lining up, they're not lining up for me, I I I'm at a loss of many years of sitting here, listening to presentations from many departments. Um I'm a little spicy about I'm a master pa- plan follower and this is not directed to you, but I got no support on the master plan uh when the ship was brought up and I got no support on following the master plan. Where those are stakeholder, uh you know, we stakehold with our community to implement a vision that they have for us and so when we get so far away from the master plan, I get really concerned, not that it's not a beautiful amenity, not that the community's not proud of it, not that community and visitors from all over, we're seeing exponential numbers of visitors at um the money or the memorial, but I'm just not getting total vision, like I just feel like there's fragmented projects, this one being one, um what is the total vision of the Riverdale Regional Park, like I'm not like I I, when I first got elected, we went on a a tour because it was still COVID, so we went on a driving tour and the the priority of the regional park was the playground. Um we just did a grant, it approved fencing. Now, I thought we were gonna complete all the barns, but now we're not gonna complete one of the barns and I'm I'm just really fragmented, we have the bluffs, we have not even talked about what we could do at Willow Bay, um so I need to see some of these things across the finish line, I almost need like a, I don't know if it's called like a Gantt chart of what are all of the projects and where are we at? Like what is out there? Because I feel like we have years of work, years of money, we have a lot of money to do work over several years. Um and this is the same thing with, I see Brian Staley, um same thing with transportation and it's a matter of transportation's very fluid. Um Brian comes back to us and was like, okay, is this still the priority of the board and depending on political legs and you know, funding dollars, um the slots can change positions a lot, the top ten can change a lot and as far as implementation and I feel like I kind of need that here is like, what are the top ten, what are the things that we are working on? When are things coming to completion? And I just feel like we're concurrently running a lot of projects. Um this slide, thank you for all the ideas, but this is a lot to digest in bullet points of like, I feel like it's a little um here's all the possibilities without solving the problem of why we're in study session today. So those are just my thoughts and I've been a little spicy about this behind the scenes of I'm just at a loss of implementation and ask and changing priorities and is it our priority, is it your priority, is it the park's priority, like whose priority is it, like who owns the priority? Um I appreciate Steve bringing up, you know, the water again, but I don't think it's this type of setting is setting priority, I think that's just an idea, we're just spitballing ideas. Um so I'm just, I I just need a total outlook of what parks looks like. And Kathy, I'm so sorry Kathy, um so thank you uh for for this presentation, talking about this project, this was something I was not previously aware of, cause it predate predates my service. Um I, and this and this, I mean, and I understand this slide is, here are our options and I think the I wanna stick with the positive right now, which is that we have options, especially if we re- drink, get this money back from Mile High Flood, which which we should. Um I would like to have further conversations and it might be an executive session, Heidi, about this Clear Creek situation, because now that I have have better understanding from the last hour of conversations, I have some thoughts on that, that I would like, that I think need to be in executive session. Um I, again, we have we have options, this is not a day for strategy, but I would agree that I do not have a clear understanding of, because we have so much land. We're a big county in many ways. I don't understand how long things have been in the queue, how they got in the queue. I don't even know in my head, I can't always picture on the map where exactly we're talking about. What is the the plan for Riverdale Regional Park? In and by that, I mean, when do we get to the point where we we pause? Because it's a beautiful space, we could add, we could, you know, we could add on to it and and develop it and enhance it uh on, you know, or in perpetuity, I mean, every every year, but that has great impacts on what we do in other areas. And that's the, and I think that for me, those are the moving pieces of, you know, and I kind of need a flow chart or we have a conversation of like, if we choose this, what 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 goes where, where do where's, you know, how does that impact other visions and other things that stakeholders have told us they value and things like that. And I know that's a big ask because it's so much land, but I just, I and I don't know exactly how you're putting the presentation together, but you're the experts, but that is really kind of what what I need to make sure that I feel like I'm making great, uh good contributions and and representing what people, what residents say they want, and there's also information I need in addition to what I hear from folks is what has been, what have been stakeholder, in what's been stakeholder input in the past, but not so far back that things that have since occurred might change what they say, so again, it's so many moving pieces, as other people have said, but I I think that would be great, it's cause it's, I'm very excited talking about all of this and just what could be. And I wanna, and I think we wanna, I wanna stay excited about it, um but I also need to feel solid in my recommendations and I need a better foundation in order to do that as new commissioner.
Great, Kathy, Dion? Yeah, I I I think we have been talking about this for a little while and I think the big picture conversation, we can chat after about the best way to bring this back, it sounds like, I just wanna clarify, just making sure that hearing that we're hearing sort of what we're looking for, um an overview of the master plans, other plans that are sort of guiding development parks. I think a diagram will be really helpful.
I need pictured words, I'm just gonna say it.
That would be really helpful, like the map that public
Yeah, that would be great.
Similar to see where work is happening, but I do think it's it's fair to ask and for us to also provide feedback on, you know, where some of these prior priorities came from. Because we have master plans and we also have other requests that have come in that are definitely not uh necessarily generated by a master plan. And they've come from different places, some from communities, some from staff, some from prior boards, um and I think we, i- it's a good idea probably to check in and understand what generated priority and also is it still a priority and we've been talking a lot about that of you know, how do we, how do we get that input, how do we talk about that and also plans are, you know, ten years or longer, conditions do change, um and needs do change and funding changes and so they they have to be refreshed, but capital projects need a long on-ramp. And so just kind of thinking through how we're continuing to report prioritize, but also creating a roadmap that we're all familiar with, so that these long term projects can continue, because we can't change those every year, you know, so I think that's We'll bring back, uh one thing I would ask for is just kind of direction on this, the study sessions we have coming up, cause we do have coming up on the twenty ninth, um a a conversation about the the um South Plate, we have conversation coming up about events and fair. Um I think we also have a conversation coming up about bluffs. Would you prefer to have that broad overview first before we bring you those other study sessions? Cause I do think it might be the cart before the horse, if we need to have the the high level conversation first. And I wanna make the best use of our time in planning.
That's a great question.
Uh honestly, I think I need the full picture.
I I, yeah, I hate to say it, but I think that is the way we need, I think you're you're right, that we need to maybe
So I guess my question is, is what were we gonna cover on the twenty ninth that had if any budget implications that we needed to discuss?
Yeah, it's time sensitive, just about.
I think special events probably, we need the conversation just as we're establishing the budget for that. Um at least to talk about how we're thinking about fair and special events going into next year, there's still time to plan those events. We need to have some direction on how big of a placeholder is in our budget for Um at, but there's still time as we develop to be more specific about what those events are gonna look like.
And that's an operational discussion.
And all of the rest of this is Kathy.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I was, I I was hearing, I think we can, I think we can have a fruitful conversation about events for twenty twenty six, because that's immediate and time sensitive and constricted, you know, by our realities, and then the capital conversation uh could be later.
Does that make sense, Byron? I I think just mapping out some of the things we're looking for.
I I like how you're laying that out, um I will say a couple things. Don't wanna miss out opportunities on acquisition, so I totally agree and appreciate what we're saying. I don't wanna be like a daylight dollar short on some of these, and so for me, while I do understand how, well first, I I will say literally like, yes, I I when I say the big picture, that there's always been a desire, I just wanted to know that that's always kind of been a true north, right? Just like mobility and accessibility on our streets and our part, you know, and on our uh, you know sidewalks and things like that, it's just, it's that kind of like a principle or true north, it's always been there, I just didn't want, I wanted, I said that earlier, but I also recognize what we could do is I just don't wanna be a daily dollar short on land acquisitions, period. So if it means that we kind of say, look, and we're still gonna look at the big picture. What I appreciate also recently, it's been outstanding, is to have people like Brian Staley and his team come in and show, here's all these projects, here's kind of our internal like assessment based as best we could on objective criteria with what information we have. And and we could always tweak it and look at it and say, well, and then we had the conversation with with Amir and his team on all the facilities and then, you know? And then we see that there's a capital list here, there's a capital list here, uh capital project list. Uh and then there's, like, it's the same thing, I see us starting to get to a point where we're kind of like almost creating apples to apples and standardization in these presentations and to me, that's exciting. It's it's showing a a a, you know, a professionalization maturity maturity building in our organization that will, I think, be a benefit to this board in in years to come, because they'll be able to see, well, here's the public works type projects. The criteria might be a little different, here's the team that makes it, but it's ultimately up to the county commissioners to make that decision, they're just giving us information. Same same format, everything could also be with the other facility, we're starting to see it. Same could also go with parks, you know, and say, and I I'm actually starting to see it already, but I think as we start pulling this together, it'll be something that in a couple years from now, you'll be like, how did we ever get along without that kind of standardization? And it'll really help. And then what I also appreciate particularly about this board is they're willing to look at the details. Like all the way get down into the criteria and the grading and the discussions, the facts that are input. And then what I also appreciate that this board is doing is saying whenever you spend on a one time capital expenditure, does become a long term uh maintenance obligation in the long term. Even when like Brian was talking about those uh bus stops recently, it was like, I got I got caught up, wrapped up on that initial cost, like how is that gonna be so expensive, but it was the thinking ahead that said, no, also remember, whatever you build, you have to maintain. And so, and of course, I'm gonna continue to say, we still need to kind of dust this off on the right away stuff, cause we still like conquered that issue. But there's opportunities there with all these different groups, but I I just, I'm giving you a compliment that I think like we're moving towards that. And I think uh we're not there yet, but I could see this, it's almost like what I feel like Lynn is asking for, cause I think it makes sense. And it's what I think Dion is saying, and I think as we start to standardize these processes, you're gonna you're you're gonna see that this this whole discussion in years to come is gonna continue to get easier. Well, maybe not easier, it'll continue to, it it'll be easier from the procedural last Well, maybe not easier, it'll continue to, it it'll be easier from the procedural aspect.
Can we, thank you, great flag, can we include in the uh events discussion of what land acquisitions might be possible in in short term?
I was going to suggest maybe instead of doing the Mile High Blood District presentation on the South Platte River. On the twenty ninth, maybe we do a conversation about acquisitions because I think we have some ideas. Of how we could maintain it and we'd like to bring that before you and 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 get your perspective.
This is budget sensitive for this for twenty six, yeah.
Budget and time sensitive, but I still think I'm going to support Lynn. In the concept that we still need to understand any decision in the context of the big picture.
Yes.
If we're going to be promoting systems thinking, I still think even though we might have some time and budget constraint, like urgency on some of these things. It still makes sense to say by making this decision here, you're potentially impacting over here.
Yeah.
So I guess my follow up question would really be, what would be the timeline of a larger parks conversation? And because we don't want to wait forever, like I think we, it can't be like May, right? When would that timeline look like and maybe you could just get back to us, I I think definitely.
Talk about that and what makes sense to pull that together.
Okay.
You come back to you with that.
Obviously, anything that's budget sensitive needs to happen on the twenty ninth, anything, but I don't want to wait till May to have the full overview. Because I do feel like there's. Some tension that needs to be just figured out and that way we have a plan and we all know what we're moving forward.
You bring that back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're having a good time.
All right, we're ready.
Okay, we are ready.
Great.
All right.
Good morning, commissioners. We, Daniella and I are leading the next update on our coordination on regional projects with our municipalities. We're planning to continue to bring these back about every three months on a quarterly basis to give you the latest status on each of them. And in anticipation of AdCOG next week, we wanted to make sure you had the latest information and some information about how we begin to develop a framework for working in collaboration on these projects. So I will begin. The format's really similar to the update that we provided in July, and we thought that would be the easiest way to kind of track updates is to continue to give you this same information in the same format. So we'll be giving you that current status, and then Daniella will talk about the proposal for a new framework to engage with our cities. In terms of what's happened to date, as we all discussed, there was a desire to put all this information in a single place. And so in July, the July 22 study session, we presented it in this format for the first time and began to propose this framework, which we're bringing back for you today. After July, we then went and presented to Thornton City Council. We had dinner with the Town of Bennett Board of Trustees. There was a virtual meeting with the city and county of Broomfield on September 16th about some budgetary questions that falls connected into some of the projects here. And then next week, there will be an AdCOG dinner. We did have some discussions with Commerce City about presenting to them, and their city manager asked that we wait until their new council is seated and come sort of part of their orientation with the new council in January. Okay, that's smart. Yeah, so that's why that was pulled off the calendar. And then I think there's some early discussions with Westminster, which we're working on framing exactly what it would be about and when. So that's kind of in the queue, but not yet scheduled. This is a snapshot of the six topics that we presented to you last month. And in the interest of time, I won't go into the details here, but you can refer back to this at any time. The status column will tell you basically what's going on when the presentation was prepared. And this is our summary of how funding has been allocated and operational funding that will be needed in order to sustain some of these projects. Many of them have ARPA funding, and then the discussions that have been ongoing have been about how to create a sustainable funding model and whether there's been a discussion about how to split that amongst the partners. And then the pacing kind of falls out in the far right column in terms of when's the first year that additional funding is needed.
They can't see the wrong side.
Oh my gosh, I'm flipping the wrong slide. I need to use one. Okay, so this, I'll do that real quickly. The ARPA funding in this column here, many of the projects that have ARPA funding, we've been in discussion about the sustainable fund and the proposal for splitting it and then the first year that would be needed. Okay, so Levon had to leave sadly. He was here waiting for the
We're having the nurse.
All right, we're ready.
Okay, we are ready.
Great.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. We, Daniella and I are leading the next update on our coordination on regional projects with our municipalities. We're planning to continue to bring these back about every three months on a quarterly basis to give you the latest status on each of them. And in anticipation of Adcock next week, we wanted to make sure you had the latest information and some information about how we begin to develop a framework for working in collaboration on these projects. So I will begin, the format's really similar to the update that we provided in July, and we thought that would be the easiest way to kind of track updates is to continue to give you this same information in the same format. So we'll be giving you that current status and then Daniella will talk about the proposal for a new framework to engage with our cities. In terms of what's happened to date, as we all discussed, there was a desire to put all this information in a single place. And so in July, the July twenty-second study session, we presented it in this format for the first time and began to propose this framework which we're bringing back for you today. After July, we then went and presented to Thornton City Council. We had dinner with the Town of Bennett Board of Trustees. There was a virtual meeting with the city and county of Broomfield on September sixteenth about some budgetary questions that falls connected into some of the projects here. And then next week, there will be an Adcock dinner. We did have some discussions with Commerce City about presenting to them and their city manager asked that we wait until their new council is seated and come sort of part of their orientation with the new council in January. Okay, that's smart. Yeah, so that's why that was pulled off the calendar. And then I think there's some early discussions with Westminster, which we're working on framing exactly what it would be about and when. So that's kind of in the queue, but not yet scheduled. This is a snapshot of the six topics that we presented to you last month. And in the interest of time, I won't go into the details here, but you can refer back to this at any time. The status column will tell you basically what's going on when the presentation was prepared. And this is our summary of how funding has been allocated and operational funding that will be needed in order to sustain some of these projects. Many of them have ARPA funding and then the discussions that have been ongoing have been about how to create a sustainable funding model and whether there's been a discussion about how to split that amongst the partners. And then the pacing kind of falls out in the far right column in terms of when's the first year that additional funding is needed.
They can't see.
Oh my gosh, I'm flipping the wrong slide. I need to use one. Okay, so this, I'll do that real quickly. The ARPA funding in this column here. Many of the projects that have ARPA funding, we've been in discussion about the sustainable fund and the proposal for splitting it and then the first year that would be. Okay, so Levon had to leave sadly. He was here waiting for the YRAC update, but we've been working closely together. So I'll share. This is just the background slide. And then in terms of the current ask, they have completed site selection and have identified a location which is working, they're working through leasing terms and details around that location. They do have a financial commitment from Signal Behavioral Health. And this one does have a pretty good established funding stream because all of the partners maintained their funding, including the county and the sheriff's office budget. And so that will help support the launch, the relaunch of YRAC with that shared investment model.
Quick clarification on YRAC before you jump off. I wanted to clarify, have you double checked with each of the cities to ensure that their YRAC funding is still secure? Have we specifically asked that?
They have some initial startup funding from the link and then they also have been able to utilize a consultant, a nonprofit leader to help advise them on sort of operations and sustainability.
Okay.
And that is Becky Hoffman, and she has done that work that you just described.
Okay.
There is a document that has put all of that information together and confirmed what those funding commitments are and the status of them in the twenty-sixth budget. But because they had that seed funding, they were able to put some staff resources on those tasks and put all of that information together. And Daniella, do you have anything else you want to share about that?
I just didn't want to assume that they were still a budget line item when maybe some cities have moved on. But if it was confirmed, that makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah, quite a few of them had maintained that in their budget. And then there was a lot of communications with them this year to reconfirm those discussions.
Yeah.
They also are in discussions about how to commence operations sort of ASAP. And even before the building is available for occupancy, they're looking at models to commence services with sort of a distributed or you know, office in multiple locations kind of framework so that they can get services up and running now that they have some money assembled. And so what I've heard is that they are hoping to launch services by the end of the year, if not sooner.
Oh.
So this one's, I think, going pretty well. There are details certainly to be worked out about the space and the design of that space and the term of the lease and we're all working together on that. But overall, a lot of progress has been made.
They, in my conversations, they're also asking for fiscal agent or sponsor?
Yeah. We have started to discuss that with several governments. And those conversations are still ongoing. There are multiple cities that have been engaged to discuss if they're a good fit. Dionne and I have had one conversation about that. Plenty to discuss. There are no proposal as of today for us to be the fiscal agent. There was an initial meeting about that. And then I know they've met with, I think, two other cities.
It's been kind of an exploratory conversation so far. We met with Levon and talked about sort of some of the, what that model would look like, but also some of the risks that might be attached to that if he asked us for the county to become fiscal agent or administer operations in any way for the YRAC. And he went back and is having more follow-up conversation with him right now. So I haven't advanced that fully yet, but it is an idea that's being floated.
And I did ask about it in advance of the study session. He told me there were two other cities that were approaching. So they weren't sure what the best fit is going to be.
So they, they are looking to have one jurisdiction be the agent?
Yeah, so they, they have an entity already established, but they were asking for some sort of administrative support from one of the local governments, I'd say. Details would definitely be to, to be determined which functions would be assisted and which government would be the best fit for that in order to help them with, I guess, some compliance functions. There was some discussion about sort of admin, HR type of support. I think there would be a lot to discuss about the benefits of doing that versus the risks of doing it. And then funding sustainability, if there was ever a change to the status of YRAC.
Yes.
Who's left and kind of holding?
Well, that's my question is if they, if, if somebody becomes the agent in that way, is there, are there financial resources that flow to that agent to support that outsized work, that extra work or no?
I mean, I mean, we, we, we come in and out of this conversation a lot over the last few years and we and the question is, and I'm going to ask Heidi to weigh in on this, is at some point it asks maybe something along the lines of can these people be for this organization be a county employees? What does that mean? And when you have the checklist of maybe an all-in-all menu of like, like, what does that mean? Does it mean that we do our payroll, HR, recruitment? Now you're also doing benefits. Now you're doing retirement. But we a couple of years ago, and it's nothing against this organization. YRAC is amazing. And Becky Hoffman is by far the one of the most, the best nonprofit leader I've worked with in my entire career. This is about, we have made decisions in the past to not do that after we got rid of like AC Rep. And then we have some issues about what's the scope of the library pension and folks. And then we have the healthcare, health department folks. So I just think when the, when it comes to us at some point, it's not a bad idea for us to have the holistic picture of here's how we're doing this in our organization. Within our organization, you have full-time employees, you have contracted employees. There are also some organizations that are attached to us, like the library somehow. We share the same pension, but we don't share it. That's it. But we don't share these other things. Whereas ACED years ago, they were this, they were somehow attached to us.
I, I think from what I could figure out, Steve, the only thing that we shared with them is they were on our benefits plans, that they administered them.
But like you literally could see a graph and say benefits and there would be an X there, but not, you know what I mean? Like it's inconsistent. And I think when we do have this conversation, it will draw the tension that if we do it for one, others are going to ask. But it's also good for us to know where we have some of these one-offs now. That's all.
And it's generally been sort of the questions that we raised too, when we talked to them about it. So I know, I don't know if there's another asset that's going to come forward or where they're going to land with that, but that's what they're contemplating.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Family Justice Center, you're pretty well looped in on this because we've had a lot of budget discussions about it. So I'll just let you know that you probably heard a little bit around stakeholder input on the design of the interior space at the Human Services Center. Our facilities team has met with Empowering Voices, I think, three times since those concerns were raised and they have come up with a I think a good design. We're sharing that with the steering committee next week. And then if there's support and direction to move forward, we can begin that process of planning for those improvements, which would lead to, you know, a mid-year occupancy, which lines up with some of those budget requests for FTEs next year to commence operations in twenty-six. Do you have anyone who has anything else about the funding discussions?
No, I mean, you know, we, we have met a couple of times with DA Mason and you all were there for the conversation from field and sort of what the next steps are. And really we're focused now the twenty-twenty-six phase, working with our cities to basically define the operational model for the FJC. That includes not only staffing and services, but also what participation will cities have, what the funding allocation will look like. And we're continuing the FJC meetings, committee meetings to discuss that. So I, I don't think much has changed since the last time we talked about it. Roomfield's attorney sent the letter last week, basically signaling that they don't wish to participate in the FJC. And so we're kind of working through what that actually means. We may have room filled residents who utilize the FJC. So that's, that's part of the conversation will be ongoing for the next coming months.
It's, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I know you're having these conversations. Have we gotten word from any other city that they might not be willing to participate in the FJC? Like, for example, thinking about it from a city hat, like if Broomfield doesn't pay, why do I have to pay type situation?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that Commerce City has expressed some concern about
Okay.
what services and also just accessing the FJC. Same with, I don't know, and Aurora. I, I don't think from the beginning Aurora was ever seen as being a big partner in the FJC just because of their own services that they have. But a lot of it is the centralized location and how
Yeah.
you, how they access it. And I think Commerce City, similar to Broomfield, they have some other services that they believe would be duplicative, maybe of what the FJC is doing. I don't know. It's been a strong yes or no. And Jason's been really engaged with the committee. So they're still at the table, but.
So, but Thornton, Northland, Westminster, Federal Heights, is the only remaining four then?
I, I think Federal Heights had some concerns about duplication, that they just had questions that I think could be resolved, but they had questions. Thornton and Northland have been fairly supportive the entire time. Westminster, in fact, I think already contributed twenty-five thousand dollars. So you can see there is support there. Bennett, I actually recall not being concerned about the funding, but just wanted to understand the project more. So I think moderate support from many, but questions certainly, and wanting to know more detail and more how much exactly and how is that determined and what's the methodology? Certainly a lot of open questions for discussion.
Okay. Well, I imagine more pushback given the fact that if one city could opt out, then why can't others? And are we modeling the potential cost sharing among those that are just going to say yes?
That's another question. Yeah, that's one of the big questions as to what that will look like. It's a good question, but yeah, that's what, I don't know. We have a determination yet about the actual breakdown and what the algorithm is for determining that. That's what the committee is.
Here's where discussions need to be. As we get to end the presentation, putting a place together to have those discussions is definitely our recommendation because it's been challenging to have these at the city manager level only. And we, you know, want to discuss putting together those three levels of engagement at a regional collaboration level so that we can make sure elected officials are informed and engaged in the discussions. It's still make the budgetary decisions.
I'm just kind of thinking from our own budget, we're putting in money for twenty-six by ourselves. And if this thing, it doesn't have a life after twenty-six, what does that look like? And what does that mean for us? Because if we're alone or the costs have gotten so high with just our three partners, four partners, what does this look like? And so I, obviously we don't have the answers today, but that's just one of the things I'm thinking about. We're putting in this money to get this off the ground. But yet we don't know if it's actually going to live after twenty-six. So that, I'm just a little worried about that.
Yeah, that was the solution we landed at because there wasn't going to be probably financial participation from the cities, given the timing of certain actions at the end of the summer.
Yeah.
And so in order to get it off the ground at all, we discussed proposing a smaller number of the FTEs being funded by the county at the onset with discussions about either outside funding or other governmental funding to come through additional discussions in the twenty-seven budget process. But there are certainly concerns and risks involved in opening without that being established, but the, the alternative was to delay opening further.
Yeah.
And this is the proof of concept here that we're really trying to get to. What is the actual program? Yeah, going forward.
And you guys don't have to get this now, but I would be interested in just knowing what is the county's financial commitment to literally lifting this up off the ground by ourselves in twenty-six? Whatever you want to put in those numbers, that would be great. It just doesn't have to be right now. But if you could give back to me on that, I think that that's a really important communication point for us to know as leaders and policymakers, we are doing this by ourselves, but then also we're taking on this risk.
Budget team's here behind us today and that could probably be a follow-up item.
That's fine. Yeah, exactly.
Session since those FTEs are in the proposed budget and we can have more discussion about that.
Yeah.
Okay, the behavioral health facility background slide is here. I think everyone's pretty well-informed about this one as well. The current work is we will be pursuing local approvals for the proposed location in Commerce City in twenty-six. We're in our own facility. One, the project team is putting together the consulting team. And as I mentioned, we have engaged Walkeen. And we'll probably need to have some separate discussions with you all about how to put those meetings together, given kind of scheduling constraints amongst all of our calendars. But we will work on that, maybe even immediately after we leave when we talk about calendars. That those meetings, I think, can take place in the month of November. And that will give us the advantage of knowing who will be on council in twenty-six as well. And then we're also engaging the other consultants we would need to complete our conditional use permit application and have had discussions with city manager about, he predicts about a six-month-long schedule for getting the CUP to city council. So that would still allow us to have a determination before the end of the ARPA award. And so this is still on track. And we'll still need to have more discussions about long-term operational funding needs. But we do have several commitments from Signal Behavioral Health to assist with startup funds and operational support in the first year.
Well, okay, that, that big next question. It's just startup first year. So what's the long-term sustain, like sustainability of plan? I'm trying, I'm trying to encourage us not
Been engaging.
Not to repeat the, oh, we'll figure it out later.
Yep. And the health department's been engaging with all of the cities on this project regularly and has proposed in each of those meetings proportional share payments from each of the cities. And so that's been the model that has been suggested from the beginning on this project. And it will require, you know, the same kind of conversation we just had on the last project, which is that how do we prioritize these? What do we do if some cities don't participate? What's the role of the county? What's the role of the cities? Just the location drive, whether people participate? Or is it some other factor? So many of these are in that similar state and don't ne- necessarily have the outcome determined and the role of outside funds. That's not necessarily city or county funds. I think it's an important discussion on this one because this is a type of facility that we are opening because there is a gap in our community, but it would typically be privately operated and funded with awards from state. Be- Behavioral Health.
The benefit that we have in this discussion is we started from the very beginning with those discussions on funding. So this one was not a surprise at any stage.
And there, there's very strong interest in local law enforcement in getting these services established. And so a lot of those police chiefs are, are supportive of finding a way to share funding in this and so that we have a little more control and making sure that this service exists in our community and that we're not fully dependent on it being profitable to private partners. So there's definitely some questions, but that's the path at this point.
Thank you.
Wrong way. Okay, the animal shelter update. This is the background slide regarding the shared funding model that exists today, which you can see in this blue column is that our twenty-twenty-four actual operating expenses were roughly five million. The portion that comes from IGA revenue is three hundred and seventy-one thousand. And as you all know, we had discussions in the summer of this year, starting in May, concluding in about July with all of our partners that are in IGAs with the county to use our shelter. And those discussions had some challenges and some timing issues with their budget processes. And so therefore we are going to maintain the current IGA commitments for the next year in twenty-six and continue these discussions into the twenty-twenty-seven budget process. And there are some recommendations that we have in terms of not going all the way to full cost recovery. Potentially trying to get back to something around, you know, twenty percent of our costs are covered by IGA revenues rather than something like less than ten percent is where we are right now. So and then you'll see a note on here, staff assembled feedback from the twenty-two discussions. I made sure that we. On this one, we've covered in the past, but this is just an important thing to remind ourselves of. Um this one we've covered in the past, but this is just an important thing to remind ourselves of. Who's responsible, accountable, consulted, informed. As we engage with our cities and discuss this new framework, we know that this is an area, homelessness services is an area where they will continue to. Want to have discussions, there aren't any specific projects yet identified or shared funding or regional um commitments yet. But this is a discussion point that we know will continue to come up, and so this is just kind of our continued placeholder for those discussions and. Obviously, that was what the city of Thornton was most interested in engaging with us about, and we would anticipate there will be more of that. As we convene regionally.
And we did um follow up eh with their staff on the points where they wanted to learn more from us. On our um Trail Ranger program and some other things that have been moving the needle for us. So our teams are connecting further on that.
That's a good one.
Okay, um. Same concept is that when it comes to changes in federal funding, shutdown, uh HR one changes, Medicaid eligibility. All of that, um we know that our cities have um less of this information than we do. Will want to understand data around their city residents, and if you want to come over Katie and talk a little bit about. Um you know, we are obviously navigating all the HR one changes and trying to respond to impacts from the shutdown. And so we just anticipate this is an area of regional discussion.
Agree, thank you, Kristen, uh and as we spoke about the federal shutdown, that is colliding with HR one. Uh impacts that are also kickoff beginning uh in October and November. Uh so just uh of note, many of uh the households who receive SNAP will receive approximately ninety four dollars less. If there were a benefit in November, um so ongoing. Due to one of the new provisions of HR one. Uh and so the team has already been working and you saw some of those communication examples of how we're working through the HR one. Uh changes that are occurring.
So, um I think there's a time, we'll probably. Yeah, we were gonna do more on this topic today, but instead, um things kind of went a little bit in a different order today. So that's kind of the placeholder for that, because we know it's regionally important to our community. Um this is a reminder of kind of the timeline and milestones that have happened so far. And then um budget adoption is here with the um. Turning pivoting into the twenty six budget year, we know there will be ongoing discussions about some of these topics. And then ARPA ending at the end of twenty six is obviously an important milestone in this discussion too, so. Another fourteen months before the end of ARPA. Um not the recounting, right, Danielle, and so there, that's the most important window of opportunity to discuss funding sustainability. Reminder of kind of the pacing of how, what order these seem to be shaking out with FJC and YRAC being on the left. Kind of the most urgent from a funding perspective, and then um ongoing funding for some of those projects. And then animal shelter, behavioral health, meeting funding in twenty seven. Uh Danielle is gonna um bring back the conversation about a framework for collaborating with our.
Yeah, so uh we did present the same framework back in July at the last mini uh study session that we had of the same topic. Um just to refresh, this is just a proposal on how we can better collaborate and coordinate. Across all of our municipalities and with different projects and our timelines, budgetary needs. And so the technical and staff working groups, those are the groups that are already happening, um you know, they're being led by um the. Kind of permanent managers, um they're really putting together like the expertise, the project plans, what would it look like? Um so that's already happening, you know, something that we are proposing is that we um have. You know, a thread line through all of them, so that we, those groups are coordinating or proposing projects or budget ask all in the same way. So that we don't have, you know, different projects in different timelines and just having different levels of um communication or ask. For all of our municipalities. And then an executive level regional working group, those are our ELT levels that come together at the city manager, county manager. To have these discussions, really review the recommendations for, from the technical staff and align on those priorities. And then the elected officials, um those are, you know, decision makers, so they get all the information. Um receive regular updates and just really make those final determinations and commitments. I think that is also where um. The um that group is setting the vision and priorities for the region, uh right? And so some of the questions that you were all asking, like if we don't have enough commitment, does that project move forward or not? I think that is at the level that those discussions need to happen. Uh the people and capacity at that um executive level um working group. And so really coordinating, um what capacity does each municipality have to coordinate? You know, who's facilitating meetings, is putting agendas together, and then um again, that commitment and support both from the. Um executive level and then the um elected officials level. So, um we need all of this to move forward, yes.
Question, so on the uh. The regional working group, have have all the cities identified, like have they identified who those people in in their organizations are going to be? So we had, that hasn't.
Nothing has happened yet, and so that's where we're going, um you can go to the. Go forward, yeah, to that one, that's where we're building momentum, right? So a lot of these conversations have been happening in separate um settings, you know, um ELT and. Uh the board has been um having presentations with our municipalities. So um we are proposing that at the next AdCog Regional Conference, um. We can present this framework in a very high-level brief overview to all of the municipalities. Um and invite them, you know, we've talked about a one-day workshop where we, you know, bring everyone together, and that's when we start visioning and prioritizing as a region. Um so we would propose that uh the next AdCog um dinner. And then, um that's, you know, the next step of that would be confirming with the um executive level. Staff and team from each of the municipalities to confirm their staff engagement, who would be participating, what resources can we all pull together?
Okay.
And then we can uh work on just having briefs for all of these projects that we can share out. To especially after elections, to all of the elected officials, so that everyone has the same information in the same way. Kind of the proposal for next steps up into discussion.
And we'd like to put uh opening discussion points together for next Wednesday that. Either you all would share in the round robin piece when we get to that, or I've also requested the um. Agenda from Broomfield to see if we can. Slide in there um and propose this, and I would anticipate at that time, there'll be a lot of questions. Related to what's going on with um HR one and and SNAP and some other things at that time. So we may be able to convince them to have a larger discussion in that setting. Um I imagine that that it'll be a large Q and A is what my suspicion will be.
Julie. Um so regarding this timeline, I want to just clarify, early twenty twenty six, um I'm hoping. I'm hoping for early twenty twenty six, we're talking January, for a couple of reasons. We'll need to talk to each city manager to determine when their new councils, everyone's getting a fresh council, right? Is going to be going on their retreat, like everyone goes into like a little retreat, a weekend thing, whatever. We want to have this regional conversation before those retreats, so that everybody knows that this is on the horizon of things to prioritize for twenty six. Um so that does mean very early twenty six in January, which means we probably need to start looking for dates now. Um and the reason why, I just want to capitalize on that opportunity that, you know, we meet with these folks before they all huddle. And start prioritizing the work that they're gonna be doing for twenty six and twenty seven and moving forward. Um and then that also starts the conversation around budgeting, right? Yes, we just wrapping up budgets now, but of course, city managers are already thinking about the next one. And so those asks have to be early and they have to be very specific. Um and so I I just don't want to get us in the situation to where we got this year, where we didn't make our asks. Soon enough or clear enough earlier, um so I think having a long runway helps. And then um another thing that I was thinking that would be hopeful, uh um. Actually, I lost it, I lost, maybe it'll come back later, but um those are timeline is just what I'm really concerned about when it comes here. Oh, my other question is, um can we just do a quick glance and look, or maybe even reach out to our s- our county, our city managers? And understanding, how did they manage their budget this year compared to last year? Did they contract? Were they consistent? Because one of the things we're gonna need to be thinking about is how does the economy impact them? They're sales tax people, right? Bread and butter. If sales tax continue or do decline, I don't know where they're at right now, um if that declines. Are we anticipating a contraction of their budget from where they were? I'm trying to get a sense of how much money can we even play with if we wanted to, when it comes to our ask with them. Um because, you know, but a-again, kind of going back to. How do we move forward as a group, really depends on what kind of money we're even talking about when it comes to some of these projects. Um and because there's a lot of us, there's a lot of money. And so how do we like be really thoughtful thoughtful and forward-thinking about. The situations they're gonna be in, in the twenty six budget. Um we can't predict the future, but you know, we, we probably could come up with some assumptions of where our city managers are already thinking. They're already thinking about it, so touching base with them and getting a sense.
We've already actually started a lot of that, we have kind of like a group, group email uh with city managers, and that's, that was a hot topic this year is. What, where's everybody at? Um most cities have some contraction with sales tax. Um there's a couple of exceptions, but most of them uh have had to trim their budgets. Uh because of sales tax collections being a little lower, I mean, just projecting out that that's going to continue. Um you know, thinking about the timing and the uh, you know, early J-January or whenever in January, you're right, we would need to be. Planning that already, and I think next week's AdCog dinner would be a great time to tee up this conversation and kind of talk about the timing and get it. You know, in everybody's minds that as a concept, um or placeholder would be really helpful, because we're already, it's October, I think they should. Be ready for that, and even the budget conversation, I might be, because I just mentioned we're gonna be, you know, talking about that as well, what the capacity looks like. But we have been talking to the cities, we have a running list.
Yeah, we do, um and effectively, um just the easy way to put it is everyone is impacted except. Except Bennett, except Bennett, is what I was gonna say, they are um continuing to grow, and they're building new commercial and residential. So they are um feeling pretty decently as of about a week and a half ago. And the rest of the cities are impacted, but they're also taking a similar approach to review that we are on that two-year. Timeframe, and so we're very much in connection with how is everyone moving? And Dion's right, if we can then kind of loop in all of our elected officials into that same conversation together. Next week, that'll be really helpful.
I will note that there are some elected officials that I've already talked to who are not going to um AdCog because they're going to the CDOT meeting. Um so, so we we might not get everybody, but if there's like some type of message or communication, like or something.
Could do a leave behind and a message out to everybody.
I think people would appreciate that, because I don't, I actually don't know who, how many people are gonna be there next week.
So, I appreciate that, Julie, and really looking at, and the board. Kind of briefly talked about calendaring when we did our five-on-one planning session. Our five, the five commissioners met, um calendars were, was one topic of discussion just amongst ourselves. When are we gonna be in office? Do we take intentional time off for spring break or holidays? What's, what does that all look like? And we're gonna have another conversation, because we're now moving study sessions permanently to Wednesday. Um is really mapping out, as Julie said, even second quarter of twenty twenty six. So that look forward of, we are lagging behind about a month, month and a half from city budget, so. We're not on the same footing, and I think Julie is right, having been also on council, Kathy as well as. You do have that come-together retreat, and then you do have the budget discussion and meet the departments um in the spring. When it comes to the animal shelter, I think I like the way you framed it, I think it was Kristen, um is that cost recovery? And we talked about this at cities, especially like rec centers of the cities. At least City of Brighton, um at the time I was on council subsidizes. We want a healthy neighborhood, what our community, so with that long term in mind, we did subsidize. And our goal, there was a goal of like X Y Z amount of cost recovery percentage. And I think that kind of goes the same here, also. It is a cer- th- we have the animal shelter because now Brighton being one is that they don't have. Sheltering services in their own city. So there has to be a balance of whatever cost recovery is determined. We also have to understand in cities as well as that, you know, if they're giving us an equivalent of one FTE. I don't know if that's realistic, you know, kind of this conversation we have with Broomfield is like the cost of them. Um going on their own is their own judicial districts versus being part of the seventeenth, same thing goes with cities is like. It's in the millions and millions of dollars for to build a shelter, to staff a shelter, to manage shelter, to do all the things, and. So there is that benefit, and I do see synergies there that could be a positive conversation. Um as far as AdCog, I won't, I saw the email from Broomfield, we will need to unpack that at some point in time. Um I read it as the net difference of their proposed versus their support is about three hundred thousand dollars. Is that right? It's okay, we don't have to talk about it now. We have a lot of work to do as Adams County, and I'll probably be one of those elected officials that will dedicate most of my evening to CDOT. Cause we've been working with CDOT on that I twenty five for so long, and then maybe make an appearance at. In Broomfield, and I think there's a need to have a relationship with Broomfield. I'm not sure the need is all of our cities and that AdCog hosts with Broomfield, because we have so much information. Relationship building, news, um as information becomes available, whether it's federal governments, our budget, this programming. Do we go our own way? Because we can literally fill up an AdCog meeting every single month just with our own cities. Rather than looking at a quarterly AdCog meeting that includes Broomfield, so I think there's a relationship we need to have. As Adams County with Broomfield, but as far as the benefit of our cities, the benefit is the relationship of. Commerce City's there, Brighton's there, and I can talk to all the different, you know, people from Adams County, but I think that. Really honing in this regional collaboration is Adams County really stepping out front and having these conversations with our cities. And using that time, and I think the frequency of AdCog, and I think it might be a political lift of. Calling new elected officials, existing elected officials, like come to the AdCog meeting, we're gonna talk about spark and food scarcity. And we're gonna talk about animal shelter, I mean, there's so many things that we could have a monthly meeting on. The number of things going on in the county, not including what's going on at the federal, the state. Um and also building a really tight collaboration with um all of our cities, and were they. Just, just getting that sense of relationship and community solutions back instead of it's social event. Which is great, but it's doesn't solve the problems um of the really serious topics that we have facing us as accounting.
Thanks, yeah, I think this is, this is exactly where we need to go, we need to have a regional network that is established. That people are assigned to the same way they're assigned to other outside committees as all electants are, and 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 staff, executive level staff are. This is about building muscle and stamina. And we need to have, and to the point, to Lynn's point, AdCog has become a, here's what's going on in our city, here's what's going on in our city. And then everybody leaves, and and that's why I have struggled with the timing. Since I've been elected, to see it as a value add to my schedule, quite frankly, because I don't know what it, how it propels us forward as a, as a region. So this is what we, and also, and and he, and in combination with this directly, not just people collaborating and showing up, meeting being assigned officially. Is building stamina of what the contribution means, there are, when there are electives, local electives in our municipalities. Who are spreading misinformation about the budget realities of Adams County, even though they could go on the website and look for themselves. Even though they could go on the website and look for themselves. And that is the type of stuff that this can mitigate, that these relationships can mitigate. So that when we, so that we all know when we're in the room together as electives with our staffs, that we know the realities. And we know what their budgets look like, they're telling us, we do need to kind of re-sink our timing, you know, and we'll get there. I think this is all stuff that we can do and I want to support this completely because this is. How the county engages with our municipal partners. There is a wide range of what people think and expect and are willing to contribute. And we need, and we as the county, I think, coming in with this framework and engaging in it and asking them to engage, I think is exactly what we need to do.
The only observation I would just make for the group to think about is that, is it unusual that we're doing this when we're at Broomfield? Because that's a different partner in AdCog.
Good point.
Yeah, when we're in Broomfield, if we're pitching this, is it gonna land as well as if we did it in a different way? Because Broomfield's just got a unique role.
Got our own thing right now with Broomfield, that's not necessarily the same level of.
The timing were different and we were.
A lot of this isn't relevant to Broomfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That, I take your point. Then what do we want that outreach to look like?
We want to get it going as quickly as possible and that's obviously our upcoming regional convening of the cities. But I don't know if we should go that deep. Think about it a little bit more carefully because Broomfield's raised some concerns recently about how they're treated as compared to our cities.
And I will probably also get CDOT that night because it's at the community center and Thornton. And actually, CDOT was very, was responsive in specifically moving this meeting to Thornton as we collectively disentitled.
And what we could think about is putting together a slightly different meeting, kind of as soon as possible, probably in November. It's just us and our cities and start there. And then it's really focused and it's like responsive to all the discussions that we've been having this year. And we can discuss how that may or may not reshape the AdCog meetings, but we can discuss it with just our cities first. And so we can put together a, a meeting, whether it's virtual or in person, just getting it on the calendar in November will be key, I think. I do too. They're hungry for some.
They're very.
Conversation, so.
Right.
Do you want to bring up your idea?
So, yeah, just clarifying, so the meeting in hopefully January of twenty six. That's, that's kind of like a summit, if you will, like an all day.
That's right.
Meeting, convening, all of us together, kind of talking it through. Okay, and also just to know, because our council members work, it'll probably have to be a weekend. Which I'm willing to say Saturday, maybe.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's our little retreat as a region before you go do your individual retreats.
Yeah, regional retreat.
I think we want to wait to poll what date it would work until the meal after election.
Sure.
And then, but we would propose January dates.
Yeah, poll quickly. As a newbie, you just tend to go to what you're assigned to go to. So only because you don't actually know what you're doing, which is fair. But, so we should have at least where a good couple of dates lined out. And, and yes, the newbies may or may not be able to make it. But for those majorities that come, like we, it just helps because some people try and get away in January. You have to be. Yeah, we'll work with city managers to.
I do like the idea of getting in front of the newbies before that misinformation can take hold.
Exactly what I was thinking. I'm like, let's get in there January and say, it's a new day. We'll give them all stickers. Tell you what the county does.
Friday update, she sent you a spreadsheet that has a tab for all of the municipalities and the candidates and the current council members. So you can use that as a reference guide and we'll keep it updated. It's a live link, so. And she can update it post-election too, just so you know. Okay, I think we have direction. We'll work on getting a meeting with just our cities on Thursday, Thursday. Never mind that I just said that, I meant to say November. And shit, for our AdCog meeting next week, I think we'll just kind of do business as usual, since we'll have sparse attendance for those that are trying to. Cover two bases at the same time. Okay.